I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of December fourteenth with the Quincy Planning Board. I'd ask for a roll call vote. A roll call, excuse me.
Member Glenn present?
Member Lisa present?
Member Callian present?
Member Barry present?
Member me present.
Full. Okay. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of a public meeting or may transmit the meeting to any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged or by unpermissible. First item on our agenda is the minutes from our meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. I think the board members have all had an opportunity to review those. It would be entertaining a motion to accept. So, for a second. Scottson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first item is a continued public hearing for thirty-one, thirty-nine, Newbury Street, Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case Two oh one six dash eleven, continued from October nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, Christopher Harrington. My law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway, and I represent Heat Treatment LLC, who's the applicant in this case. We came here this evening to give you an update on the status of this project and where we are. We've received comment letters from the city departments, as well as a peer review report from the city's peer review engineer. We've responded to all the comments in those letters and reports, revised the plans and revised the stormwater report and the traffic report to incorporate all of the suggestions and all the requirements that were given to us by the peer review engineer and the city departments. At the moment, we recently refiled, recently filed, excuse me, revised plans and revised reports. The city departments and the peer review engineer have not had time to review those revisions as of this evening, so there's no real expectation that the project is ready to move forward or will vote tonight. But we wanted to let you know where we were. The project has been reduced to seventeen units. It was eighty-two. So, we have a seventeen-unit project.
Seventeen.
I'm sorry, seventy-two.
Oh.
That was all set.
It's even written right here, so I had to.
It's a post-it, right?
It's a seventy-two unit building, a hundred and eighteen parking spaces, which is ten more spaces than what's required by the ordinance. Our traffic engineer, Jack Gillen, prepared a full traffic report with traffic counts for Hancock Street and the intersection of Hancock and Newport Ave., and also the ramps from the Ponce Boulevard Bridge. So, that information has also been submitted. The most significant news, I think, is that our LSP, Mr. Baird, has been in touch with offices and officials at Mass DEP about the AUL, the status of the property, and cleaning up this site while the project is under construction. And he's had several discussions with them, and had several very good, positive discussions with them that he'll tell you about. It's our position, and we stated this in October, that this project can be cleaned up while the building is under construction. The primary issue with the AUL that's presently on the site is that with an AUL, it prohibits certain uses on the property, and you can't have that use on the property until the site is remediated or the AUL is amended for the new use. So, there's currently an AUL on the site that says it can't be used for residential purposes. Our position is that you granting permit to build this building is not the change of use. The change of use doesn't occur until the building is finished and the applicant goes to the building department and applies for an occupancy certificate for a residential building. So, today, we have an industrial building on the site that's not prohibited by the AUL. Assuming this is approved, we'll allow a construction site on the property for at least a year and a half, and then residential occupancy. So, our plan and our position is that we will have the site remediated or in compliance with DEP regulations by the time the building is ready to be occupied. Mr. Baird is here with me this evening. He's done some preliminary testing and has updated information about the condition of this site compared to its condition the last time he was there, which was a few years ago.
Thank you. My name is William Baird. I'm with Web Engineering Associates in Estouette, Massachusetts. Before I hand out these drawings, I received the letter from the Board of Health to you. I then called Joanne Fagan, who is the Director for Brownfields Sites in the Northeast Region. This is a Brownfield site. Just a little bit about Brownfields. It was put in by the legislature about twenty years ago. And what Brownfield says that if you did not create the contamination, but you now are responsible for the property, and you clean up the property to the S1 GW2 standards, which is the most stringent standards in the Commonwealth, you are entitled to a fifty percent tax rebate on the cost of the cleanup. That's the incentive to take, basically, in most cases, abandoned sites that are contaminated and then have an investor buy those sites and clean them up. We've done three or four Brownfield sites in the last few years. I talked with Joanne Fagan. She was concerned about the Board of Health letter. I've talked to her twice. I sent her all the information that she asked for about this site, and she would like to have a meeting with the Board of Health and your Director shortly after the first of the year, plus the potential owners of the property. So, that's where we stand with the DEP this time. She would really like to see this site cleaned up. She knows that it's currently in bankruptcy. The only way the site is going to get cleaned up is to have a deal Brownfield, so they have the investor take over the site. When we were here last, I mentioned that we were going to go out. I presented to you the existing monitoring wells and the contamination that was present in those wells in two thousand and thirteen. We have since retested the wells, and I have the results of the resampling of the wells that are currently on the site.
Thank you.
As you can see, some of the wells, MW fourteen, seventeen, nine, and six, are essentially not contaminated. The laboratory results came back non-detect. Non-detect doesn't mean that there's nothing there. It just means that it's below the ability of the laboratory to quantify what contamination could be present. We also talked about the fact that there was an indication that there were microbes active on the site, because I talked about cystic chloroethylene. It's only created by pyroremediation or microbial degradation, and that vinyl chloride is the last contaminant present as chlorinated sites degrade from perchloroethylene to trichloroethylene to cystic chloroethylene and then vinyl chloride. So, if you take a look at, like, MW nineteen, which is up on the upper left-hand corner, at that time, we had cystic chloroethylene and vinyl chloride, and you can see that now the contamination is less than one. So, that's a good sign. And if you look at MW twenty-one, thirteen, and eight, to me, are the same numbers. That site, that well has not changed any in the level of contamination. MW twenty also had the dicloroethylene and vinyl chloride, and those levels of contamination are down considerably. In the center of the site, though, there's still contamination that is above the standard, and that's in the area where the AUL was filed. So, there's work to be done there to clean up that area and remove the AUL. The other wells, thirteen and seven, you can see that those levels have gone down significantly. When you see EPH, and you see EPH with numbers behind it, EPH are heavy hydrocarbons. It starts at diesel fuel and goes to asphaltines. So, these are heavy hydrocarbons. They tend to hang around longer than lighter fractions like gasoline and naphthalene, two And so, I'm presenting this to you to let you know that we have done some work out there. We're by no means finished. There's a lot more assessment to do. We need to put in deep wells, and we need to put in more wells. The more work we do in the site assessment, the better our cleanup will be, and that's what we need to know. And working with Joanne, she'll have, Joanne Fagan, will have a lot of input into our work, and as an LSP, that's a great thing, because when you have the DEP looking over your shoulder, the opportunity for you to do something that could be criticized later just goes away. That's my presentation. Do you have any questions at all?
Board members, any questions? On behalf of the board, I'm just happy to hear that the willingness to sit down with EPA and the city and the applicant, the applicants represented, I just think that that's a good. Now, I understand it's a busy time of the year, but I would hope that that meeting could be held as soon as possible.
She asked specifically that I make it after the first of the year, so my job tomorrow or Friday is to send her an email with dates and times that were available after the first. She, I deal with her, and she is going to deal with the city. She's things I can contact the city and set up the meeting. Most likely, in this building, if there's a conference room that's available for a hall of honor.
I'm sure that the city will find the conference room somewhere in this building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just saw somebody raise their hand. Public want to speak? Ma'am, would you want to speak? Yeah, I thought you raised your hand. Okay.
I'm Brian. I'd like to speak about it. Well, this is all going on.
Just identify yourself.
I'm Brian Rydes, and I live at twenty-eight Newbury Street, directly across the street from the Heat Treatment Plant. And, you know, while all this cleanup is going on, like, we live there. There's three houses. Like, what danger is this to us? Is there any going to be airborne or?
The most of the way that these contaminants are dealt with is in the ground itself, so there's not going to be, as far as we're concerned, we want to avoid excavation. We want to treat everything from the surface down through the groundwater to the bottom of the contamination.
Yeah, they have a cement floor in there, so are they going to break that all up and then take that out of there?
Well, my preference is that when they get the permit or they're sure that they're going to be able to move forward, I want to get there and drill a bunch of holes in that concrete floor and go down and get the information that we need. I'd rather, I can work both ways, but it's nice to work with a cap over everything, and that's what that concrete works.
Yeah, my concern is, you know, will it be covered up, so we're not breathing anything from us?
You won't breathe, you won't breathe anything. That's one of my tasks, is to make sure that public health and the environment are served by whatever we do. If we did have an excavation on a roof here.
Can I get in touch, or you'll get a card from you if you have any questions?
Yes.
What's going on?
Right. I've had my brief conversation.
Yeah, I'm going to hang around.
I'll give you my card.
Thank you. The other questions I have is, well, the job is going on. You know, what are these guys working, you know? And, you know, do we have to, like, adjust for a year and a half for them coming in on a Sunday or working till nine o'clock at night or, you know, where are they going to park these vehicles with all this construction's going on? We have no access to get down the driveway. It's a very thin street, and so, while this is going on, we're going to suffer down there with noise, with, you know, all the stuff that comes with this building going on down there, but, you know, it is progress and, you know, I just want to be able to talk to people in the city and the people that are building this building whenever any complaints need to be made, that we can adjust so that we're comfortable with you doing the project and not you. You know, I have tenants, there's people that live down there, there's kids, you know, families on both sides of me, and so, we need, you know, somebody that we can talk to when all, you know, all of a sudden, a big, huge bulldozer shows up in the front of the house and starts pounding and windows start cracking and, you know, the stuff that's going to happen down there. This is a huge project.
Yeah. I can only speak to the construction, and I can only speak to what I know, and everything I know, which is below the ground surface.
All right. I'm sorry. I'm talking a lot. I'm going on about something.
No, that's all right. If the planning board approves the project, there'll be construction hours in the decision. It will limit the time so we can work on the site, and we will also meet with you and your neighbors.
Thanks.
We can do it in the next few weeks if you're available. I know Christmas is right around the corner. It's not a good time to meet, but we're willing to meet with you, with the owners of the project, to talk about construction schedule, where people will park, what inconvenience you might have, what we can do to make it as little as possible.
That's great. I haven't sat in there anyway. That'd be a great thing, when I can talk to my other neighbors. I talked to Declan, and we had small conversations, but that's about it.
Okay.
But it'd be great to get your name and your number and talk to him.
Yeah, so we need to have an in-depth conversation with Declan.
Yeah.
And talk about specifications. We're definitely willing to do that.
Yeah. All right. I just want to have a voice, you know, on what's going on and be able to adjust as we go along. We're living across from this monstrous project, but we're all in favor because it's a neighborhood that needed to be developed, and it'd be nice to see that industrial building gone, to see Lynn successful down there, and then to change our street, you know, I'm all about that, but just, it's going to take a year and a half, and there's going to be some bumps for us people across the street, but we need to be able to have a voice there to talk to and have, you know, something adjusted that, you know, that's bothering us.
Yeah, I mean, the first portion of the construction is going to be built, there's going to be a lower-level garage and a garage off of Newbury.
Yeah.
Two levels of concrete garage.
Yeah, when it comes out on Newbury and it back, I already know all that, and I understand I've been to the last meeting. And I, you know, I understand until the building's up, once you guys are working inside, we're not going to be able to know you're there.
Right.
It's just the tear-down and then the exterior of the building, and that's the problem.
Yeah. We'll be able to use the two levels of the garage for construction workers parking during the construction process.
Yeah.
The garage will be high enough on the second floor for pickup trucks, but we'll talk to you about that.
Okay, thank you. My answer's here.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'll talk to you.
I'd also like to add, Jim Fetz, he's the planning director.
Hi, Jim. Nice to meet you again.
Pleasure. What we've done, again, the way this process has worked, is there's a proposal. I heard what you heard at the last meeting. We took that information, we shared it with our site peer review, who had concerns, the health department had some concerns, so we engaged the proponents in dialogue. We called the EPA, excuse me, the DEP, as they did. There were conversations back and forth. We felt that the best way to manage this project would be, in fact, to have the DEP meet with us and the city engineers and the city health department, and also with the proponent, to sit down, discuss all these issues prior to anything going on here at the zoning board, excuse me, at the planning board. Subsequent to that, the zoning board is also going to participate in this project. They'll be looking at it. At all times, there will be an active monitoring of the site by city agencies, just as the reason this came about, because the health department got their information. We sat with also the building inspector, DPW, all different city groups, and then we also hired an outside engineering group to take a look at all of this. So, that's why we're here today, having this conversation. So, every single piece of this plan will be before you and before the public. You'll know what the construction hours are. You'll know where the trucks are coming. You'll hear about how many trucks are coming. There'll be a construction plan. There'll be a level of comfort for the neighborhood to understand exactly what's going to happen. That's on us to keep an eye out on what's transpiring on the site. We do that on citizens' behalf, so anytime you have a question, in addition to speaking to the proponent, you feel free to give me a call, or the planning department will walk you through each step.
I'll get your card after this.
Okay, absolutely.
You live in the greatest city in the USA, that's what I feel.
That's right. I agree with you.
Nothing better. That's why I live here. I love Quincy. I'm a lifetime resident. Quincy High, seventy-four.
Yeah, hi. My name's Brendan Plon from twenty-eight Newbury Street, but the whole question is that, like, I mean, it's almost to me like an open ticket. They're coming through with things that aren't there. So, when we do have an issue, or when we can't hear everything that's happening, where do we go from there? I mean, because this is where we have our voice now. If they come up and say, oh, these are our plans, this is what we want to do, their plans are incomplete. So, now we're going to vote on it, on incomplete things. So, this is where I have a problem. See, I don't have a problem yet, but I don't know the whole story.
I understand. And I think, as Mr. Fetz has represented, the process of the review process that's going on internally, if you will, and now including DEP, okay?
Right.
So, that when the applicant, after that meeting, and our next meeting or a subsequent meeting, there'll be a presentation of the entire proposal, we now will have the advantage of having information both at the city level and the state level with DEP, which is information that will be shared by the applicant and by, and/or by the city at the time of the presentation.
Right.
So, there'll be another opportunity after the presentation for you to speak, and hopefully everything will be explained to you after that meeting.
That's exactly what it is.
I understand.
All right. I just, it's not the whole.
Understand.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak?
I just have one quick comment.
All right, John.
We've been doing a lot of commercial or industrial sites. You're giving people special permits to build residential areas where it wasn't zoned to build. So, I think one nice thing the planning board could do would be, this isn't typical building. If you are going to give them a special permit, they shouldn't be able to do anything on Saturdays. Saturday's a day off. It should be Monday through Friday. Obviously, never on Sunday, but, you know, if they're doing it, you know, if it's a real construction project, you know, maybe like where they're doing that one by BJ's, let them do that on Saturday, but these people live across the street. Saturday's probably their only day off. They don't want to be hearing that jackhammer going at like eight o'clock or seven o'clock. I'm not sure what time it starts, but when you give them the special permit, which it looks like they are going to get it, don't make it that special. Just say you can't work on Saturday. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in the public? Number Barry.
Just a question or a recent comment, apologies if it was already raised, but when you guys do come back before, it would be very helpful for me to understand exactly what the building will look like from ninety-three, from the Ponce Boulevard Bridge coming down Hancock Street, which is, you know, obviously part of the gateway to the city, and from ninety-three, it's going to be very important to make sure that we understand what this building is going to look like to people passing by, so if I could just put that on the.
Yes, on the revised plans from off at you, he did add the adjacent buildings to give the perspective of what the building looks like next to existing buildings.
Yeah.
But he doesn't have a rendering of what it would look like if you were in the middle of the Ponce Boulevard Bridge.
Yeah.
And so, I'll get on him to do that for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so I'd ask for a motion to continue this to, I'd like to say to our meeting on the eleventh of January, but I don't know how quickly things are going to happen, and that's why I asked for a pair.
We're going to do our best to have the answers by the eleventh of January.
Okay, so I would ask the board to make a motion to continue this item to the eleventh of January. It's a second motion. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a continued public hearing for twenty-three to thirty-one Bridge Street Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case Two oh one six dash twelve, which is continued from our November ninth meeting. I have, the board has received a request addressed to me. Please accept this letter as a formal request to continue this matter. Until the planning board's January hearing date. Petitioners have been working diligently to address all of the comments and concerns raised by the city departments, peer review consultants, neighbors, and National Park Service, and recently submitted revisions to its plans, which are being reviewed by the city's peer review themselves. Departments advise that additional time is needed to fully review the proposed revisions and the peer review reports before recommendations will be available for the board's consideration. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your assistance. Side by Edward J. Fleming was the attorney for the applicant. We can do it. Okay. So, the request is to continue it to January eleventh. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Certainly.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a continued public hearing for one fifty-one Hancock Street Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case Two oh one six dash thirteen, continued from our November ninth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm with the board, Tim Johnson, architect with a business address at one ninety, we'll call the Avon, Boston. Our initial peer review was on October twelfth of this year. We did make our revisions, but drawings, resubmitted them to the board. The second peer review came out on December ninth. There are basically five items to address. We did address those, resubmitted to the board. However, talking with the planning board today, we felt that the board and the planning board need additional time to review our latest preventives, so we are respectfully requesting a continuous.
It's a motion from the board to continue this to the eleventh of January.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
So, vote. Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a comment. I'm happy to help.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing for fifty-six Albatina Street Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case Two oh one six dash fifteen. In accordance with the provisions of National Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December fourteenth at seven thirty-one, in the first floor boards and commissions room, Quincy City Vault, thirteen oh five Hancock Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, on the application of Michael Brenham, sixty-five Rose, Reservoir, Quincy, Mass. oh two one seven oh, for site plan review under the Quincy zoning ordinance Title seventeen, Section nine point five point one, site plan review. The applicant proposes the construction of a new two-and-a-half-story, three-unit condominium building combined with the renovation of an existing single-family home to a total of four residential units with a total of eight parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. The property contains ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one, excuse me, plus or minus square feet of land and is located at fifty-six Albatina Street. I'm sorry. The subject property is located within Residence B zoning district and is shown in the assessment plan. in the assessors plan, 3100 Lot 2, Plot 15. Yeah?
Good evening. My name is Tom Kellman. I'm attorney here in Quincy with an office at 15 Fosse Street. I represent the applicant, Michael Grehan. Everybody isn't here as of yet. With me also is Mr. James Burke, with the ownership of the property. Currently on the property, as you've seen in the submission, is a single-family home. It's a detached garage. It is a residence fee, uh, west Quincy area, Quincy. Currently, the property there is much dilapidated. Uh, what we're proposing to do is demolish the existing garage, rehabilitate the existing single-family home. In addition, develop a two-and-a-half-story building, uh, which would house three townhouse units, each of whom would have two car garages. Uh, the lot actually abuts both Branch Street as well as Albertina Street, uh, so it's served by both those public ways here at the city of Quincy. What we propose is that for the unit that is on Albertina, which is a single-family home, that would be accessed via Albertina Street. The three units would, uh, the three units that in the new construction, uh, would be served by Branch Street. A portion of that street would have to be paved, which we undertake to do. Currently, I don't believe that there's any stormwater mitigation there. You'll hear from Mr. Burke is what he plans to do and he plans to propose to this board. Uh, and I think what his proposition will show is that it complies with the current stormwater management. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Burke at this point.
Thank you. Jim Burke with the Sel Burke Associates. And we've, uh, field surveyed this parcel that stretches from Albertina to Branch and it's about 10,700 square feet of the existing single-family houses. It's kind of run down. Uh, we did some soil testing out there up in the back. We found, uh, a lonely sand. It's not the, it's not fine sand, which, uh, with no groundwater, which is long unacceptable to receive stormwater. What we're proposing is a 72-foot-long by 24-foot-long building, uh, with three floors, and making improvements to the single-family house up on Albertina. Curve cuts will be improved for Albertina for the free space parking, uh, for free space of parking for the single-family house. And, uh, there's also going to be a driveway that do not interconnect, so there's no cut through traffic going through. But also, uh, there's going to be two additional spaces along with the two spaces for each garage. So there's going to be eight spaces for the three build, uh, for the three-unit building and three spaces for the single-family house. Stormwater is collected with deep sub catch basins and, uh, deep sub ban holes for water quality. Going to dump into a single row of 11 Kultek 330s, uh, which handle the 2, the 10, the 25, and 100-year storm events. So we buffer all the storm events. In addition to this onsite improvements, we have some onsite improvements that we're proposing. We're going to be extending some pavement onto Branch Street to, uh, Branch Street in particular, locations a little run down. So we're proposing right now a 24-foot wide by 60-foot apron. That's, uh, right now, we're, and we're working with the Quincy DPW to solidify that. Uh, new building will have all new service utilities. The existing building will maintain all the, their existing utilities. And, uh, I think that's about it. Do you have any questions?
One question. Mr. Barrett?
Captain, I, uh, just a question about, about the parking codes. Just want to make sure that I, looking at the dimensions right now, there's two parking spaces under each of the unit, um, uh, on the southern end of the property. And is there enough room for a guest to park in front of the garages at night and not, not disrupt the exit of the, um, the other key unit?
I'd have to say no. I mean, right now, we do have, I've got 24 feet of driveway from the face of the garage to the curb. So you park there, you know, some cars probably get away with it, uh, but that's the whole point of the, uh, the two spaces up top. Uh, whereas, there will be, you know, room to park down the end here, you know, for the spaces there. And, you know, and the other, uh, the other thing is too, is, you know, when you're having guests on this particular, well, it's three units, small. Hopefully, when they have guests, they'll invite their neighbors over and park in front of them. So, yeah. Let's, let's note it. Very helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Um, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak, staffs if they identify themselves. And if you do not wish to speak, we have sheets on the side, uh, both in favor and in opposition. Anyone like to speak on this item? Anyone would like to speak? Anyone would like to sign? Okay. I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearings. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The pop, Mr. Stevens?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The department is prepared to offer a recommendation on this project. And we have a number of conditions I'd like to read into the record. First condition, uh, if the board chooses to approve this, would be the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the inspectional services department at the time a demolition permit and building permit application is filed. Number two, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be recorded at the North Fork County Registry of Deeds. Number three, the applicant shall apply for a stormwater connection permit from the Department of Public Works before construction. Number four, the applicant shall replace the existing asphalt sidewalk in front of the proposed development on Albertina Street to match the existing sidewalk. Number five, the applicant shall be responsible for the asphalt pavement of Branch Street to provide safe access to the site. The applicant shall submit to the city engineering office for review and approval of pavement plan prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Number six, the applicant shall confirm the house numbers to be used with the city engineering office. Number seven, the applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number eight, the applicant shall develop a road and control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on site, which will include the name and contact information for on-call pest control company. Said road and control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining their building permits. Number nine, upon completion of this project, the applicant shall submit to the planning board and engineering office as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and right-of-way. Plans shall be submitted in a digital, digital format that is acceptable to the city. Number 10, the hours for construction activities will be as follows. 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturday. And all construction and deliveries shall be prohibited on Sunday unless a different schedule is approved by the chief of police and the city traffic engineer.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any wishes? I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, subject to the conditions articulated by Mr. Stevens. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded and to accept the recommendation from Mr. Stevens for 56 Albertina Street Special Permit Site Plan Approval, Planning Board Case 2016-015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Huh? You want anyone? Yeah. Same with the two.
The, uh, the next item. Just for all those that attended, I just want to say that a member, Glenn, has provided some coffee and some munchies down the back. Everyone is welcome to see her. There goes the vice chairman. He's going to be there for us. Help yourself.
I was asked, uh, well, as usual, driving, still wait for toddies to show, uh, chew stuff out here, so.
Okay.
That's going to call it out.
Okay. So we're going to jump ahead to the next item, which is a public hearing. 4373 Dennis Ryan Parkway Certificate of Consistency, Planning Board Case 2016-COC03. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11, National Laws, Title 17 of the Quincy Municipal Code, the provisions of the Quincy Center District Urban Revitalization and Development Plan, Urban Renewal Plan for the City of Quincy Center, Urban Revitalization District dated May 7, 2007, as amended. The Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, uh, December 14th at 7:43, 13, at the first floor of Bird's Boards and Commissions Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, on the application of Quincy Chestnut Place LLC for a certificate of consistency as defined within the Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 10, and in accordance with Section 12.02, subsection 3, and Section 2, overall redevelopment strategy of the URDP pursuant to Section 8.3, Quincy Center District, Quincy Center Revital, Urban Revitalization, Urban Renewal Uses. The applicant proposes the construction of a high-rise 15-story luxury residential tower with retail and commercial space on the ground floor. 124 residential units with a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Parking provided within the dedicated spaces within the adjacent parking garage will be constructed. Approximately 7,850 square feet building footprint with plus or minus 117,000 total gross floor area. The subject property is located within the Urban Revitalization District of Quincy Center Zoning District, -15, and is more particularly identified, shown on the, on the City of Quincy Assessors Plan, uh, number 1142, is Block 40, Lot B. Planning Board shall issue a certificate of consistency upon finding that the proposed project is consistent with goals, objectives, and requirements set forth in the URDP. Mr. Hanez?
Mr. Chairman, through you members of the board, my name is Paul Hanez, and I'm here on behalf of Chestnut Place LLC. As the chairman said, we are here seeking a certificate of consistency. We also know it's going to be a long process. Right now, as we speak, this matters before the city council for the LDR. There's only really going forward with regards to that, and I know the board has to take this into consideration. We also know we have to go through a P and E process. Uh, but right now, presently for you, I have a team of Chris Sculte from EBI Consulting, as well as Arthur Casey from Chestnut, uh, Chestnut Place LLC. What we're proposing is, as the chairman said, we're proposing to build 124-unit apartment building there, right, or luxury apartments, right across the block that exists now, across the Quincy District Court. Also underneath, you're going to be, uh, you're going to, there's going to be all commercial space right underneath there. We feel that this will ultimately be the consistency in what the proposals are throughout Quincy Center. Uh, what I'm going to present to you before is right now is with Sculte, right now, this is going to present a, she, PowerPoint presentation of what the building's going to look like, the architecture inside. And again, I think after the board sees this, and after we go through the whole process and work together, both the applicant and the board and the city, we're going to see this going to be an extraordinary, some, uh, apartment building that's going to bring huge asset to the city of Quincy and what the proposals are down at Quincy Center. So I may.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Carlos Sculte with EBI Consulting, the civil engineer for the project, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, so I'll go through a little bit of the context of the site, where this is, how it relates on a high level to some of the work the city's undertaking in the parking lot and surrounding area, and then talk a little bit about the, uh, the building as well. So, so what we have here is, uh, the site's located northwest corner of the existing Hancock parking lot. Uh, so we have it right here in this location. Courthouse is located on the opposite side of the street. The West of Chestnut Building recently completed, not yet shown on the aerial map, is in this corner. And then we have the existing Forest Building and a number of retail buildings along Hancock Street at this location. So the frontage is on Dennis Ryan Parkway. There's an existing property in between Conde Javale and Marcell, and there's also additional property in between the road and the site as well.